Welcome, everyone. It's Thursday, June 20th. Brookfield Select Board Meeting. Please rise for the board.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, couple announcements. This meeting is being recorded. It is all now officially live on cable on channel 194, so we are live. Also want to make an announcement that the fire department has been awarded a $3,600 grant for SAFE, the Student Awareness of Fire Education, and $1,800 for the Senior SAFE Program for FY '24. And signed warrants?
Sure. Signed warrants for fiscal year '24 warrant 25 accounts payable of $84,636 and warrant 25 payroll for $210,522.66.
Now, to the agenda, do we want to, well, we should probably take some of these items out of order for time's sake. I suggest that we take, sign the grant of easement for 147A Lake Road first as a joint meeting with the Board of Health.
Sure. They already made their meeting.
Are you guys ready to go?
Yeah. Open the joint meeting.
Yep.
At 7:02.
All right. Does anyone have any questions about it, or are we all good to sign? This is easement for a sewer so we can close on a piece of realis-- or...
Install a septic system.
A septic system, so they can install a piece of real estate.
Yeah, it was discussed at the town meeting and put it on, so I think there's really nothing to discuss.
Right.
Yep. Make a motion?
I make a motion that we, can I see the easement?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we sign the easement for parcel 147A for the purpose of installing a septic system on Lake Road in Brookfield, Massachusetts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I gotta sign it. And then Mike Series coming to notarize it.
Okay.
I think you all have to take a separate vote for it to be...
Yeah, I was gonna say...
All right, so here's your motion to the Board of Health to approve the easement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, and does it look like, do you all three of you have to sign this?
Ah, yes, we all have to sort it out.
All right.
Mr. Callahan is a notary if we want him to...
Oh, should've thought of that. Mike Series on his way home. Oh, also, anyone else recording? Mr. Leepack, anyone else?
Oh, you have, you only have two pages, it's a three-page document.
Yeah. Do you have things now, or aren't you? Or he says he's on his way.
I need to go down to the other end.
Yep.
Just seen the sign, the print. It just says print, but the sign...
See in boss one?
Yeah.
Do you know if we're gonna need copies of this and give this to him tonight? Was that the intention?
Yes, they would like to.
Okay.
I mean, they're supposed to be here.
He's here.
Okay, perfect.
You want this tonight, right? You want this tonight?
I wanna do what he needs to do.
Yep. Perfect. It's probably...
Right on cue. You just waiting for the big entrance.
Excuse me? Yeah.
Have you made a motion?
Yeah.
Can't hear anything.
I have a hard time.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you imagine?
All set, same.
Come on.
Perfect timing. We just finished signing.
And then, do you want to make copies and...
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Do we want to move on? Um... Do we want to take the treasurer out of order?
Yeah, let's take the treasurer out of order.
Yep.
And honestly, we have on the agenda that I'm speaking to the employee training, and I already spoke to that, and there were some significant issues with it, and I don't know if things resolve any of which, let's talk to the treasurer first about the position.
Okay.
Actually, with regards to that, I did speak with Holly earlier today, and she said she's all set.
Okay.
Yep. She's got, has all her paperwork in order, so she's ready to go. Pretty much rebate him what she said.
Yeah, so then, you can, if we want to talk about that issue, you can talk about that issue, because you have information I don't have.
Okay.
So, thank you.
So, who wants to start?
Well, let's start with Sharon.
Yes, she's here.
Hiya. Thank you for coming.
Thanks for inviting me. Good, how are you?
So, we're talking about the permanent position for the treasurer.
Mm-hmm.
I think we're...
Yeah, I was gonna say, I could kinda kick it off.
Yeah.
As you know, Sharon currently, right now, is the interim treasurer. She's been with us a couple months and plus. I think by all accounts, certainly from what I've seen and from what I've heard from town accountant and other pertinent town officials, she's done an outstanding job taking over for the, her predecessor. And at this point, obviously, we have an opening for the full-time position. Sharon is interested, and she would, very anxious to take the position. From my standpoint personally, I think she'd be a tremendous addition as a permanent treasurer to the town of Brookfield.
So, now, a town meeting we did, what did we cut the hours to, like, was it 28, 30?
I think it was 32.
Yeah, somewhere in that area, with a budgeted amount of approximately $62,000.
Right. So, she was suggesting taking all that budget, and if you took, when I did some quick math, if you took Amy's wage, hourly wage, and multiplied it by 32, it's roughly...
And 32 is okay, is certainly adequate for you.
Yeah, yeah. Do you want to speak to that with the...
To the hour? I'm sorry.
I know, you probably...
I have a question. So, what, are we making an hourly position, or are we tasking Sharon with the salary position?
So, so one of the challenges is, and it's something we've run into previously, is that if a position is booked at any, booked kept at anything less than 40 hours, it probably, by all rights, should be designated as an hourly position by virtue of the fact that there's a perception, and this is something we can talk about and potentially just put out on the table, the perception is if you make something salary, but it's only for, say, 32 hours, it can be looked upon by external agencies that you're just trying to avoid paying overtime. Right? So, if you say, hey, your salary, but your salary only covers 32 hours, there can be a perception that from a, like, human resources and employee relations perspective, that you're functionally setting the person up to have to work more than 32 hours and not pay them the 32 hours. Right? So, now, the flip side of it is, is that if you've got a position like treasurer where in some periods of time, there may, she might only need 22 hours, but she's taking the position expecting it to, you know, and I don't know if you would be planning on keeping your role down in Mississauga, or not, and was, and is gonna be giving up another position in order to take it, to not guarantee at least the 32 hours of pay is a different way of taking advantage of somebody. So, I think that's a discussion that we actually, like, need to have as part of this, you know. Because I'm agnostic. It could be 30, we could put it at a salary as if it was the 32 hours a week, understanding that sometimes that might be more hours, and sometimes that might be less, and the town is just paying functionally for treasury services, and that's cool, and so long as everybody's cool with it, that's fine. But we want to get it on the record that the intent is, you know, for the benefit of both the town and the employee to standardize what the pay is regardless of the hours worked, or we need to determine it needs to transition to an hourly position. But when it's, when you're salaried for less than 40 hours, it does put you in a kinda neither fish nor fowl spot, basically.
So, I am good with the salary position. I've had a couple conversations with Sharon, I'm good with the salary position. It's certainly less than...
What we're paying?
Yes, exactly.
Yep.
Yeah, and, and speaking to her, she's brought us forward on a lot of issues that were a problem before, or maybe not necessarily a problem, but we're in a better spot with percentage-wise, what we're getting for the fees that are being held. We're going computerized on a lot of the, I'm gonna let Sharon speak to, to some of the things that changes that she's made.
Yeah, because she can probably, she can probably say it in a more educated manner than you're about to, so let's let her talk.
So, just touching on the salary piece, I have never been hourly in this position, and I, I've never worked for, my hours were never up to a 40-hour work week, so I don't think we'll run into any issues there.
Great.
So, but I appreciate Rich speaking for me, so I, what he was conveying, I've bumped up our interest rates on our bank, bank accounts. So, one of our bank accounts was 2.2 percent. We got that bumped up to 4 percent. Another bank account was 1.35, and that's now 4.25. And these are not our trust funds or stabilization accounts, these are our money market accounts. So, that's what Rich was speaking to. Another thing that I've done is add positive pay to our payroll and vendor bank accounts. Positive pay is a way to verify checks that are being cashed at our banks. So, for every check that is cashed, it gets verified by a text file that I send, and, and if there's any issues at all, they send me an email, and I need to go in before noon, verify that the check can be cashed or not cashed. So, that's just another way that we're being protective against fraud. We've also added ACH blocks on all our accounts, so we give the bank a list of our, any ACHs that we may be sending or receiving, and if the vendors aren't on that list, they can, the funds would not be processed. And in the future, we'll be moving more towards a paperless payroll processing, and so that has added benefits for the employees as well. They'll be able to track their own PTO, they'll be able to go in and print their pay stubs, they will be able to go in and change any personal information or banking information, taxes, anything like that will be in this portal as well. Those are the, some of the things we'll move towards in the future.
Great. Sorry?
So, do you have any other questions for Sharon, or do you want, I'm good to move forward, and I know we have a lot of the agenda, so do you...
I'm fine.
I make a motion that we appoint, struggling with your last name.
Ashley.
Sharon Ashley as a full-time town treasurer.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome forward.
Thank you very much, and thank you.
Thank you for all your input.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
I know. You just tried to play with it.
Can you turn that up?
You tried to speak louder.
Can you turn the speaker up?
Oh, there's a speaker here, we can try to turn it on.
Okay, is this any clearer? Is this any clearer?
Do we want to take Dennis here?
Yeah.
All right, come on up. So, I know at the budget meeting, when we were going through the budgets, and we were talking about the tree removal, there were questions on the bidding process, and at that point, I threw it on the agenda. Here we are.
Good evening.
Good evening, thanks for having me. Got a little trouble with my hip. But I did bring copies for you all of the invitation to bid that we used last year. Tried to update it with the dates, and also a copy of the contract that we used last year.
I think just one of the, in the left hand.
Can you see it? Oh, yeah.
It's a lot to go through. Sorry.
So...
Go ahead, Dennis.
So, I mean, with no, no disrespect to you, Dennis, and I know, I know, Rich, you were looking to get this information, but fundamentally, isn't this treated like all of our procurement, like if we expect it to be in a certain band, that there's certain procedures we need to follow?
Yeah, Massachusetts General Law 149 governs, governs the bidding process, and it's my understanding that it's also a dollar amount base, so if it's under $10,000, you can just use general business practices. Ron will probably speak to this better than I could, but from $10,000 to $25,000, you need three quotes, and you need to have a public notification, and anything greater than $25,000, you have to publicly advertise it and have a public bid opening. And that's, that's what we did last year, we did a sealed bid, it was, it was publicly announced, we got a minimum of three, we got four quotes actually, and we did do the, the public reading of the sealed bids. I, I read them to Kelly, because we were the only ones there. But we did do it, followed the procedure to do that.
Okay. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I believe that the price we wound up getting was similar to what we had had in the past, only...
Yes.
In order to get that, that price in the past, we'd had to supply the highway labor for some of the work.
So, in, my understanding, in the past, they did use the highway labor, last year we did not, we had the contractor do everything, he provided his equipment and crew, and we didn't use the highway department.
Yeah.
And it was actually, it was less money than the prior contract.
What was the prior contract, because I'm not aware of that?
I, I believe it was $1,950 a day. Going from memory, but it was $1,950 a day, and they used the highway department. Our current contract is $1,800 a day, and he provides all the labor and equipment. And he also disposes of the waste material, which I guess in the past, the town took care of the waste material.
So, do we do any stump grinding? Because I see that...
I haven't yet, I put it in there just in case, just in case, like, I don't know, if it's something in front of City Hall or something, I just wanted the availability if we decided we needed to grind a stump.
Okay. So, I had a short discussion before the meeting opened. The one, one way I thought the town would really get a lot more bang for its buck is to group trees together and bid on 1 through 50, and then 51 to 100. And speaking with, with the tree warden, he said it was averaging roughly $700 a tree. When I was involved with some road build, or road widening in Westbrook Field, Westbrook Field bid all the tree work for the road, and it was less than half when, when, if they did it by a day rate.
By a what?
By a daily rate. So, they bid the whole trees for the whole road, and the problem is, if we break it out too much, it's a lot more work for the advertising, for the bid process, that's one of his concerns. Because initially, I said, what about like 25 trees at a time? But he said they roughly did 76 trees last, so far this year.
A little more than that, I haven't gotten the exact total, but that was the number I was prepared to present at the annual meeting if I needed to, and he's done some work since then, so...
So, but he's thinking he has an extra $15,000 this year that he didn't have last year, so I'd like...
I had, I'm not sure, I, I had $50,000 in the warrant, maybe 55, I was never actually clear on that, and there was a $12,400 annual budget for last year. This year, at the town meeting, it was approved a $15,000 annual budget, and another, I believe, $55,000 in the warrant.
Yeah.
So, and then there'll be a little bit of rollover, not much from the last year's warrant, I, I came close, but I didn't spend it all.
Okay. So, I know it's a little more work to do the paperwork, but I'd like to see, we mark out 100 trees, and we put it out to bid for all the trees rather than a daily rate.
So, what do you do if someone calls in a tree?
I'm sorry?
What if someone calls in a tree? How does that get handled?
You mean if it's changed outside the 100 that I previously marked?
Right, so you mark off 1 through 50, 50 through 100, and then I call up and say, hey, I got a problem with a tree here, can you get to it? How does that then get handled?
And the, the other thing with that, too, is as trees are identified, say, as a resident called in, and I hadn't been made aware of yet, how do I prioritize now?
Right.
Like, do I want to spend money on trees that aren't as much of a, a risk as, as maybe one that came in, like Brad mentioned?
Because most likely, someone calling in is gonna have a higher sense of, I mean, they, it could potentially have a higher sense of urgency than what's on the list.
Could it be, could it be done as a, as a, as a two-part package, where you do, you list, say, 50 or 75 trees, and then a, a second line in the contract that's for up to like 10 ad hoc trees that...
I mean, we could. I, I will say this, though, too, before, I, I do go over the work with the contractor prior to him going out doing it, and I do have a very good understanding of what can get accomplished in a day, and I give him usually more than what can get accomplished in a day, because things, come on, you know, there's cars in the way, there's road construction, so he can move on to the, to the next, the next tree, what's available, work to be done.
But, I mean, it's up to you guys.
I think it's, it's something we haven't tried before, I'd like to try it and see if Brookfield will be the benefit as a result of it.
And Dennis, you're just looking for guidance from us on how you, how we want it to look as it goes out in bid? Or do you have a recommendation?
Well, ultimately, you all make the decision. I, I think it's gonna be a little bit added work, but I'm, I'm fine with that, that's, if you think you could save money, maybe we should do it that way.
Maybe it'll be a big flop, I don't know, but I think it's worth a try.
Yeah.
Because I've seen it work before, so...
And what are you thinking, 50 or 75 is a lot?
Well, I was gonna say, I'm assuming we're grouping by geographic area?
Well, I think we could mark the trees and throw 16 to 17...
You gotta be careful, what do you mean by mark?
Yeah, yeah, we don't, so one, we don't mark the trees, because then everybody starts trying to guess which trees are coming down next, and they get upset about considering the neighbor.
Yeah, I do try to mark them prior to the contractor.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want everything, because then my phone starts ringing once my tree comes...
So, Dennis, you, you have the current list, right?
Yeah.
And so, one of the things that would probably make sense is if we could zone out the town, and like, if you've got a lit, how many trees are on your list?
200.
You've got like 200?
Well, I don't have exactly 200, but I still haven't completed an inventory on every street in town.
Okay, I know you haven't done 100% inventory, that's fine, but are, we're over 100?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So, oh, I, I, it's been over 100 as long as I've been here, okay. So, why don't we basically take a look at the geography of what makes sense, and split out something that's somewhere between a 50 and, and like 80-tree lot?
Okay.
Okay? Send that out first.
All right.
Okay? And then get the rest of your inventory done, right? And then send, once you get your inventory done, send a second lot out, even if they're not done with the first lot yet.
And a 50 to 80-tree thing could probably be a good, it might be next year, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
We did 76, as of June 6th this year, 76 trees, so...
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we could break it up and then go year by year.
Yeah, so, it's worth a try. And then that, and then that's not a lot of, that's not a lot of extra burden, right? It's just you're going by a tree, you're just going by a tree count instead of going by a day, daily work fee.
That's correct.
So...
But, all right, so if we go by a tree count, are we gonna just award this much for these many trees?
Yep.
And however long it takes you to get them done?
Yep. Well, I think that's one of the things you put in the RFP, though, is that you want them done by some date certain, right? So, even if you give them, so if, and you've been in the, in the industry a long time, you know, you know what's a reasonable amount of time to get that number of trees done, right? So, just use a date certain, that's that, plus maybe 30 days, just to give a little slush for weather, or...
Yeah.
Other workload, or what have you, you know?
Yeah. Sorry to create more work for you, Dennis, but...
Oh, no, it's, it's fine.
I think it's worth a try.
I'm here to help it out. Yeah?
Thank you.
And the, the one other thing is the, the dollar amount, and you could probably better, I think anything over 25,000, we have to have a performance bond? Am I correct in that?
I think it's 50, but I could double check.
Okay. So, we, we have to factor that in, too, that...
Yeah.
And I, I'll get with you, so we can...
Yeah, I was gonna say, we can touch base maybe on Monday, and we can kinda dot our i's, cross our t's, and get everything ready.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
I realized, so what did you want to do about employee training with Holly Chisholm?
I mean, I literally spoke with her for all of 15 to 20 seconds earlier today in the main lobby, and she, I said, I'll see you, see you tonight, and she said, no, I'm not even coming, we're all set. What that means, I'm not sure.
I don't know what to say.
Why don't we table it and see?
Let's table it.
Why don't we take Dawn and say...
Yeah. You guys are both, no, they're both, are you guys both on the Beach Committee? Is that what it is? Do you want to come up?
So, Jeff's next.
You're next, Jeff. South Palm Beach. Yep. So, a couple items on South Palm Beach. One is part of our contract, which you have in the packets, we are allowed re-nourishment of the beach. I've had this discussion with both Conservation Commission and Board of Health, and they're both are in a line that we should re-nourish the beach.
That we should?
Should.
Should.
Yep. So, there's that part to this, and then the other part that I think is more important and critical is that when the state, I don't know if you've been down there, they did a whole bunch of improvements with the boat ramp and gargrels and all that, there's actually no handicap access to the beach. So, I've been in touch with Senator Durant's office about seeing about the state giving us permission to kinda re-nourish the beach, and also address some of the concerns with the handicap access.
I guess I'm confused how we're gonna get handicap access on a beach, how are we gonna wheel? How are we gonna wheel, wheelchair or is that, are we talking about wheelchairs or how?
Yeah, wheelchairs or anything like that. And there's a couple letters from people about being able to go down there. If you look at the beach, there was kind of a trail.
Yeah.
Whether it's at the right grade or anything like that, you might be able to kinda-
I remember.
I think on the, I think on the report, the grade was a little steep.
Yeah.
But, I think the challenge is that, that I'm not sure we own that access.
That's right.
Right. So, we have to get permission to-
Either that or we can ask for forgiveness.
Right. I mean, one of the agencies that works or is responsible for the whole thing should be pushing that. And then if they say, "Well, you know, help us with it," then we would do that under contract. But, at this point, the, I don't know if it's the Fish and Wildlife or the other-
It's Fish and Wildlife.
They don't wanna do, do anything. So, that was more the issue because when they put the floating ramp for the boat situation there, that blocked people who normally would just walk down the ramp and then go around, you know, with a walker, wheelchair, whatever. Now, they can't do that. So, that's really the issue. You know, the great construction, whatever renovation, that was great, but they didn't think about the handicap access when they did that. So, the beach committee has sort of been the last two or three years fighting an uphill battle on that. That's one issue. And the only thing I can see is with Brad's help in the last several months, you know, maybe, you know, one of the state senator or the state representative would put something in there as far as trying to do a landslide. I know Dawn has been working on that for years and Fish and Wildlife has said, "No, we don't even wanna touch it." So, the only other thing we can do basically is to, as a town, say, "We would like to get handicap accessibility here" and then lobby whoever the handicap accessible state department is to talk to Fish and Wildlife to say, you know, "Let us do this, please." Because they have the money to do it. They do it all over the state. It's just we're, we don't have a sort of a unified voice and that's why I appreciate, or at least we appreciate on the committee. We have, we used to have five members and now we have four, but Brad is sort of taking it upon himself, I think, and Kelly had some input prior, but it has to be at that level to sort of push the state to do something, basically.
So, do you have a plan of how you would like to proceed down there or of how you would construct it or?
No, no. It's not our property, so we don't have any plan. All I've done is I've talked to Highway two years ago and they said, "It's probably a $35,000 project." But again, it's not our property. We don't know what the guidelines are. That was just sort of a wild, whatever, wild guess. And I know that our grant writer had, you know, tried to apply for grants. He said, "Well, you don't own the property. You can't get a grant." So, that's, we're sort of going in a circle. So, between Ron and Brad, hopefully can keep pushing, we'll provide logistics whatever we can to try to move that. I think it's a longer-term project. The other issue which we had was the refurbishment, which is identified as just one, two little words in the contract, that the wildlife, Fish and Wildlife, as the town, the selectmen sign every year, we operate under that contract. There's no guideline as far as what they mean by refurbishment. When we went, Brad and I went before the Conservation Committee, when was that, two weeks ago?
Yeah.
One of the gentlemen pulled up a whole long list of things that have to be done as far as refurbishment.
Cause you need DEP approval and stuff like that.
There's a whole category of stuff, plus he was talking about these little, they look like worms where you fill them with stuff and then they put them along the beach so that the sand doesn't run off into the pond. I'm not sure what they call it, but I've seen them around. That could be possible, but until we get guidance, since we don't own it, from wildlife or someone in the state as far as how to refurbish it, we're sort of at a standstill. Because before, I mean, I think Tim Cummins volunteered sand and we just, this is before my time, we just dumped it on the beach and no one said anything. And now it's become more politicized, whatever. So, we just-
Well, we also had one year where somebody committed to donating the sand and something went sideways and then it just didn't happen. So.
Right. But I mean, once you raise the visibility, it's like now we have to do everything by the book, I think, right? Because if someone, we start doing something and the state says, "Oh, no, you can't do it that way," then we've just wasted a lot of time and effort. So, I mean, I think we have to follow whatever the process is. I'm just trying to outline and I think we've got Conservation Commission, Board of Health, selectmen and our townsfolk. I have Sherri who lives next to the beach, wants to use it, can't. And so, I think we have a groundswell moving in the right direction. And I just basically wanted to, you know, notify everyone that we're trying to work on it, but I really think we need, and I know Kelly worked on it and I know Brad has worked on it, but just continue to keep it on a priority list as far as trying to push things as best as possible and keep us informed so that we can, you know, we have to go lobby someone in Boston, you know, fine. But again, we're not quite sure how to do that or, you know, what impact it would have.
Have you spoken to Terry Smith?
No.
He's the engineer that actually does the work. He did the work at South Palm for the parking lot and I would suggest we start with him.
Okay.
He works for Fisher, I don't, he works for Fisheries and Wildlife. Did you meet him, Dawn, while he was working there?
Yes. Terry Smith is the voter access from Fish and Wildlife. He's a good guy. He designed the boat ramp and was instrumental in the beach construction as well.
He'd be a good one to start with though, wouldn't he?
Yeah. So, I believe the agreement says re-nourishment, not refurbish. Re-nourishment, re-nourishment is very simple. It's adding sand. So, I don't believe there's any environmental issues. If your, if your conservation is willing and the Board of Health is willing to, and it's in, it's in the agreement, I don't think there's any big issue.
Yeah. It is in the agreement, isn't it?
So, years ago, I, years ago, I made an agreement with Escapistates. They were willing to provide sand at no cost and deliver it and dump it to the beach and we had a piece of equipment which would spread it out. As Brad mentioned, with the, with the construction of the handicap boat ramp float, we now can't get access to the beach. There's no way to get a piece of equipment down there, other than maybe taking the parking fence down so that you could get to it. You could, you could do that. You'd have to ask the state for permission because it is their, is their beach.
Fence, yeah.
Okay.
One of, one of the other issues that we have talked about in the past and that is making a land swap.
Which I brought up to them and-
Right. And that was shot down. Well, it's gotta be five years ago now. Actually, I met with Terry and the director, gave you the director's name of Todd Olanick. Olanick, I believe it is. And basically, they said, "Nope, we're not interested. If you were to make a land swap, the beach, which is state property, and give the state the canoe launch, which is town property, it's a one-for-one swap, you would own the beach, you could, you could then manage the beach the way you would like and spend money on it."
And apply for a grant and have any portion of it, so that would be, if we were to do that, that's the risk money you'd have. And with the work down there, I mean, I don't know what the use, what the rules are with using volunteers to do it or do we test Highway to do it or?
We can, either is perfectly acceptable, so.
Free is for me.
What's that?
Free is for me.
Yeah, I mean-
The big thing again that I'm concerned about is that, when we did talk to the Conservation Commission, cause I know nothing about all that stuff, but this gentleman whose name escapes me, he's a new member of the board there.
Bill Meeker.
He was talking about how it has to be, number one, has this, so that the sand doesn't slip into the water and then talking about raking the beach every day. And I said, "No, we're not, we're not gonna be able to do rake the beach every day." And he said, "Well, that's what it says right here." And so, at that point, I just said, "Okay, I'm just, I'm backing up and if the state wants to tell us what they mean by replenishment, re-nourishment, whatever, and on the guidelines and we'll do it, otherwise, you know, I don't wanna waste time in doing something that's not gonna be the right thing." Oh, Sherri just gave me the Mass Office on Disabilities, so probably that's a good number to start. I'm gonna call them next week and, so, you know, we'll just have to see how it goes.
So, I don't know what action we wanna do, if any, tonight. I just really wonder.
Well, I'm thinking, I'm thinking if you're willing to do some more work, save us some work-
I'm gonna keep pushing, but I wanna make sure that we're-
Come back to see us when you have some progress.
That we're all on, yeah. I think we're aligned.
Basically, Ron and Brad or whomever is signing the contract for the beach this year, that's the point where we can push limits and say, "Hey, look, we wanna do this. It says here, re-nourishment. Do you have any guidelines? You know, we'd really like to do the, you know, the handicap accessible. Who do you think we should talk to?" It's a perfect point of contact. We have once a year that they'll actually listen to us, even though it takes us two months for them to sign the thing. You know, we always get it in July and the beach opens in whatever, it's year to year, June to June.
I'm gonna get you Terry Smith's phone number as well, so you could talk to Terry.
Terry's is on that envelope that he gave you.
Okay, yeah. But again, it's just a question of who can make a decision at the wildlife, because we've been getting, you know, the land swap didn't work, the wildlife don't wanna do anything than what they're doing. So, I don't know how to move it. That's why I'm coming here to you guys and saying, "Hey."
If Todd is willing to allow us to do the work, well, then that would be a good start. Just simply ask him. He's saying, "When I met with him over a Beaver Dam, he wasn't willing to do anything there, so I'm sure he doesn't have the funds to do anything at South Palm, but maybe he wouldn't be adverse to us doing the work if it didn't come out of anything to do with their budget." It seems like their budget's the issue.
Oh, I mean, as far as for the handicap accessibility? Right, no, I'm sure it's some other, some other agency that would do that.
And right now, for the handicap accessibility, there's two, they're not Jersey barriers, but they're kinda like Jersey barriers that would need to move to even get access down there. And even get equipment down there. So, I don't know if you wanna check it out and-
Sure. I believe that Terry Smith's part of the voter access group, whereas Todd is the regional director and Todd was the one that actually works with the selectmen on the annual agreement. So, it was Todd. Terry, Terry basically ends his responsibility at the boat ramp.
Okay.
But Todd was the regional director, he was the one that Punk and I talked with.
Okay.
Right. So, are you, as the chairman, are you signing the contract this year?
We haven't received it.
Have you received it yet or no?
Yeah, we don't even have the new contract.
We don't have the, we don't have the 25, we have the 24.
I think, I think that's one of the things we should take as an action, is to follow up with them about where's the, this-
Right. Cause that's your one point of leverage, to say, "Well, we're not gonna sign the contract unless you talk to us and these are the things we wanna talk about."
Yeah.
You know?
Well, he could also say then, "There's no contract, so get off our property."
Well, it'd just be a good way to start, start the process.
Well, I mean, you're a politician, so you know how to use leverage better than I do. I'm just sort of bringing it to everyone's attention because we started, I mean, you've started it forever, but it was like four or five years ago when we didn't even have a South Palm Beach Committee and Beth and Clarence got together a bunch of people who were interested in it.
The rec committee originally, that was part of their purview and the beach funds were in there, in with the rec committee. And their focus was on Lewis Field and not on the beach, so that's when the beach committee- and then Punk talked with them about charging for the beach and then we got into that whole discussion about how we could do that as well.
Right. Cause I mean, the original genesis of the beach committee was as Dawn said, but also because there was some rumor that the Department of Fish and Wildlife did not wanna have a beach, but only just fishing and they were just gonna do away with the beach. And that's when I think Beth stepped in with Clarence and you got the group of people together, that's why we started it.
It was mostly Clarence, but yeah, they, they were looking at just letting the beach go and we agree that that was not the right direction to go for the town.
Right. Otherwise, you know, I wouldn't have known anything about it. Or else my wife heard about it and that's what's been the driver to where we are now. So, yeah.
Alright.
So, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, jeez, okay.
Oh, he left a stamp?
Yeah.
Oops.
And I hope he has the copies.
For?
For the Eastman.
Maybe we should have-
I gave it to him and I told him to bring back the copies.
He probably should've had Chris do it.
Can I have Greg's?
Huh? I don't think he's here anymore.
Do you wanna text him?
No, he's close.
Yeah.
Wait, so, you don't think that Greg got a note or is my mic in?
Oh, no, it got notarized.
Yeah, it's all set.
Yeah. It's just, we don't know if we have the copies.
Greg needs to give you the copies back.
No, Mike was supposed to bring the copies back.
Okay.
Alright. What do we wanna do?
Is Dawn on our agenda?
No. You didn't have anything, you weren't on the agenda for anything, were you? You weren't on the agenda for anything, were you? No.
I didn't wanna make you sit there and wait if you had something else on your-
No, I was, I was here basically.
Trying to go right to the sewer and go right down the line now?
Yeah. So, Town Sewer, North Brookfield had approached me. They're going through a big infrastructure upgrade with their water treatment facility and reached out about seeing if we're interested in tapping into them for Town Sewer. And I said, "Well, bring it to the select board. There's a study that was emailed or given to you."
Yeah, they got the packet, yeah.
So, this was something once explored by Brookfield back in 2000 and-
We have more studies related to sewer than shake a stick at.
Right. So, I just, exactly just that, do we wanna have a discussion about it? Is this something we wanna give over to Board of Health? Board of Health is the one that was in charge of the sewer extension study before.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, one of the things, I think it's gonna be imperative for the town to be able to sign on to the state revolving fund.
Yeah.
One, I don't know how that's funded currently. I know in my previous life, we'd utilize that for a couple sewer expansions and it was at zero interest rate. I don't believe that's the case anymore. So, I could certainly do some investigating, at least on the funding side, to see what's available.
What's the name of that?
It is the, oh boy, Pollution Abatement Sewer Revolving Funds.
Yeah. And actually, it's interesting that this is a proposal to potentially tie into North Brookfield. It's one of the things that has restricted us in the past and that other studies have put us at a bad, in a bad situation, is that our discharge, if we were to do it ourselves, would generally go to the Quabon. Because we're downstream of Spencer.
Right.
There's no, there's no room there functionally for us to have any amount of discharge because they've been over their limit for, I don't know how many years, but it's more than years than you can shake a stick at, right? So, of the options, this is the one that's got the highest likelihood of success, functionally speaking, unless we were looking at something that was kind of like an in-place vertical sewage treatment, like what they've got in downtown Middlebury. So.
I know, we just don't want, if we get to a position as a town to have, be required to build something like this, we don't want it in our town.
Right. Right. And we don't have any good place to put it.
Right. And some of the stuff in this study, I mean, the two big things that jumped out at me in the study was the houses around the lakes were a potential issue that were cited and then also the houses in the village district. Over time, as you probably know-
There's no place to go.
out at me in the study was the houses around the lakes, um, were a potential issue that were cited, and then also the houses in the village district, um, over time, as you probably know.
There's no place to go.
Right, if something happens to a septic and they fail Title V and they can't perk that land for whatever reason, they're up the creek and...
Well, not necessarily, because any septic system where there's a house, the state gives credits and special allowances for an existing septic system or an existing home. They can take all kinds of variances and frankly, with the new technology, we're just taking the septic system out that's there and putting a new one in and they last in 30 years, so I don't necessarily see the need for the cost of this unless it was all grants, because functionally, the septic system, although you pay for it initially, you probably pay the same amount in Town Sewer fees over the next 30 years, so...
So, so that's true, but it, but it has, but even though this study was done presuming it's all residential, one of the things that has hampered our growth as a community is the lack of sewage from a standpoint of getting, being an appealing place for business, for commercial, retail, anything that would expand our base beyond residential. You're right, for the state that we're in, for the configuration of the town that we're in, we could probably get by forever, especially with increasing technology. What we can't do necessarily, and, and it may be a conscious decision not to be able to do it, is to be able to have industrial, commercial areas that are able to be serviced by sewage.
The problem with it is, we don't have a vast amount of area that's undeveloped. We don't have, basically, we don't have any area that's undeveloped to then bring in business, more industrial. It's very, it's very limited.
Well, first of all, we've got...
Gabit.
We've got Gabit.
That's the one building.
Okay, that's, that's the one big building and one big plot of land.
Yep.
We've got a number of spaces up North Brookfield Grove that would be eligible for higher density development, because I know that there was one area in particular that Clarence was looking at potentially for seeing, trying to convince some external entity to come in and do senior housing in that, in the space.
Sent, that's been sent, sold, but...
But, but you understand, I mean, there's, there's...
Yeah, so my, my thought is, there's very, there's very little opportunity for the industrial, very little for the multifamily residential, but I mean, the potential...
Well, there's always the, if you, if you have the sewage, there's always the opportunity for redevelopment, right?
Possible, yeah.
You know, I...
No, I, I get it. I don't want to just close the door and I'm not suggesting that, but I just know the cost. Unless we were able to get a grant to move forward, I don't even know how we would begin to move forward to raise an appropriate.
And I'm not advocating that we do it for raise inappropriate and I don't disagree, I, I don't disagree that we need grant support. I just, I want to be careful when we say it would need to be like 100% grant funded, because every grant comes with a community match. People are aware of that, right? Now, some of them are only a 10% match and some of them are a 50/50 match, and, and I agree, maybe even a 50/50 match, given the cost of putting in sewage systems, even the tie-in to an existing one, even if you're not paying for the plant, right? Because what we're talking about here by tying into North Brookfield, you have the expense of the system, but not the expense of the processing, right? You've got piping and pumping, but you don't have processing, which is a totally different level of cost.
It's probably 20% of the actual project.
Right?
You're right.
You know, so, um, you know, and, and being a secondary system like that, we could even consider doing what they do out in the Midwest, which is, there's, uh, oh shoot, what is the name of a, they have a different style. It's almost like a hybrid between, like, full sewage and, like, the, the septic system, and I can never remember the name of it, so you're gonna have to forgive me, it's not my business and I researched it like years ago.
Where, where you, uh...
Where you dis, where you grind it first? What you're saying is where you discharge the effluent, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I think so, yeah, yeah.
So, so Spencer is large and they discharge, they have to clean up the sewage to a certain degree to discharge it to the Quabah, right?
No, no, it's different. It's, it's the way it comes off the property. I'll, I'll bring the information to a future meeting.
Okay.
Or send it out, so that you can, y'all can see it, but, so, functionally, you've wanted to bring this to the table, it's because North Brookfield made an, expressed an interest in having us tie in.
Right, now, the reality is, this isn't something that's gonna happen, obviously, anytime soon for a myriad of reasons, but one of the big reasons is, they're gonna be paving over Route Nine, and once that is paved over, which I believe is gonna be this year, we're not gonna be able to open up the road anyways, but this is gonna be a long process, so...
It would take us three to five years.
Right.
Anyway.
Right.
Now, one thing we can do, though, if the state's planning on paving Route Nine, and it's maybe something that's worth the investment, if we know what we would need to traverse Route Nine, we could ask to get that incorporated into the Route Nine paving project the same way, even though they got it wrong, okay? So when they did the bridge project, they got it wrong and it doesn't line up so you could do it, but the original intent was that they had, there was supposed to be a pass-through in the bridge to allow water service south of the river, okay? And from what I understand, they, they hosed it up somehow, with regards to how it was designed, um, but is, do we have, do we still have an opportunity with the Route Nine paving to incorporate into the Route Nine paving a pathway to do this, even if we're five years away from it?
I'm not sure.
I think we need a ton more information. I, I don't...
Well, yeah, but I, I think, I think it may be something that we can at least ask the question, and if we can get with the North Brookfield sewage.
So, do we want, do we want to get some, either the Select Board or the sewer people here for a meeting and have a, have a meeting with them?
Yeah, I think we do. I think we need a joint meeting, because, because if they can give us enough information, we can at least approach the state and say, hey...
And they can talk about how they've been financing it and funding it.
Right, exactly. I think that'd be a great idea. Let's talk, let's get smarter about it.
Because I know the upgrade they're doing is 20 million.
Yeah, it's a million.
Yeah, so let's, so let's, let's, let's talk to them about it. Let's get smarter. Doesn't cost us anything to get smarter.
I'm good with that. Eric?
Might cost us in the future if we get smarter.
You want to handle number five or...
Yeah, that's a quick one, one-day pouring permit.
Motion to approve the one-day pouring permit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight.
Do we all have to sign this?
Okay.
If there's three lines, I would assume so.
Yeah, I would assume so.
Go ahead and get the third one.
All right, I can take that back, 'cause I'm just gonna, I'm gonna give you this whole thing to get to Karen on Monday.
Okay, that works.
Actually, Karen is off next week.
Oh, then...
I'll dump it on Lois.
All right. South Pond Beach, we took care of. We can kind of pass this over. I put in town hall estimates and upgrades. I know during the town meeting, we were talking about trying to just get an idea of what we want to do. Um, I think we can probably table it, because I know we also want to get going on, um, forecasting and capital projects, capital planning. Maybe that, this be deferred to that conversation?
Yeah.
Okay. You good with that?
Yes, I am.
Uh, Brookfield Master Plan approval. Did you guys happen to...
I got the packet, but I have not had an opportunity to go through the whole thing. It's quite extensive.
Did you look at it at all?
I glanced.
So, do you know if we have to have this approved by the end of this year?
We, we did receive a, quote-unquote, completed invoice.
Right.
For $3,800 or so, or so.
They have a bunch of edits they're working on. If you look through here, there's a ton of typos and stuff like the, um, those planning board looked at them and...
I think it comes down to, are there material changes entered into it?
No.
If it's just typos.
Yeah.
Then the, the board can, I guess, qualify their, their acceptance of it, um, and frankly, once again, in my previous life, the, the state really wasn't that concerned about making sure all the grammar and the spelling was absolutely correct. They're more concerned at the 30,000-foot level and with any material changes that were going to be made. So I think we have a significant amount of latitude to, to approve if we agree with the, the substance of the master plan.
Okay. So I'll be table it for the next meeting.
Go with that.
Okay. All right, West Brookfield Road, site visit from June 3rd. Uh, up by me, Gene Lidle's house has been getting flooded. The bus company's been getting flooded. The road's been washing away. Uh, Rich and I met with Todd Atlantic from, uh, Fish and Wildlife to talk about mitigating some of the issues. Uh, the big issue tends to happen in the winter, when the water flows down Gene's driveway into the road, because it just turns to ice all winter long. Uh, we did, the, Todd basically mentioned that he was going to, um, compromise with us and he was gonna do some things and we were gonna do some things. Ron was there as well, and...
He was gonna breach the dam. He was gonna trap the beavers. Has any of it happened?
They've reneged on all of it.
Yes. It wa, it was agreed to after, during the site visit, but then when it went, I guess, up higher in the food chain, it was denied.
They said they're not touching any of it. The flow meter, that's, anyone that's being affected, they can pay to fix that. That's not on them. That's not their responsibility.
What, what we've been quoted to in several emails at this point is, even though the source of the impoundment is on their lands and it's causing issues for other abutters, the town included with the road, we have permission to fix their problem, because legally, they're not responsible for it. Frankly, that just doesn't make sense.
Right.
That the, they're the source of the problem and it's up to us, the victims, to fix it.
What makes sense to me is, they probably have hundreds of those issues throughout the state, and if they touch one, they're gonna touch all of them, so, so how do you want to move forward with it, knowing that they're not gonna do anything? What's the best course of action? I, I think, I think we're kind of at a safe spot right now, where the water's down considerably from the spring.
Yeah, we're big right now.
This is gonna come up again, maybe in the fall with the fall rains, or certainly in the spring, so what's the best course of action? Uh, maybe we get the abutters to, I know Howard Whitcomb has trapped near 100 beavers that have threatened his well over the last 15, 20 years. Do the residents of, of that area, then just take it upon them? I don't know that. We can go on state property and pay that as a town. If we do, then that opens us up to doing it all over town as well.
I feel like it's their problem.
So, who, who's problem?
State's, I mean...
No, I, I would agree.
Yeah.
I know if my property was causing my neighbor problem, I'm pretty sure I, I would have to do something, but...
Right, and why this doesn't happen in this case is...
I think because of the magnitude of the state and, and the Dan Surratt.
So what are our options? I mean, do we have KP threaten the state? Is that our option?
I, I mean, it, one scenario, obviously, is they've given us permission to remediate the issue. The problem is, if we go onto their lands, if we start to destroy and demolish the beaver dam, we don't have expertise in it, and Pete, that highway has indicated that he...
Pete doesn't want to do it.
He doesn't want to touch it, because if you do it incorrectly, that whole dam could let go and now we're having a few acres of water now pouring out of there. Who knows how much damage that caused and guess who's been liable?
The good problem, the good problem there is, it's small in comparison to the one that let go last year that wiped out the field at Tantasca that happened on Schoolhouse Crossroad, right? So, this one's pretty small compared to that one. We didn't lose the road. The water raised so high at the football field, it started to damage the turf, but it didn't wipe out the road, it didn't wipe out the culverts, and though this is a nuisance, I don't think it, it's risen to the level that we have to worry about losing a road.
So what, what's the cost of bringing a professional that actually knows what they're doing?
It's pretty, it's pretty low cost, but it's a recurring cost. I think it's roughly 125 bucks per beaver they trap. So, sometimes it's a couple beavers and, and it rids the problem for months, and sometimes it's six or eight, then it's a whole family, and it might rid the problem for only six months, because then a new family comes down and says, this is a great spot to be, right? So, it's a recurring problem. That's why Howard Whitcomb has trapped near 100 of them, that he's paid for on his own, with no help, so...
So if, if the town were to accept the responsibility of mitigating the, the beaver dam, we'd be paying for the quote-unquote, expert to remove the, the dam, and then we'd also be paying for, for the actual trapping itself, with absolutely no guarantees, as Richard indicated, that next fall or next spring, we're in the same boat.
Can we go, can we go to Berthium's office? And I know they got...
We have.
Well, so I want to take a slightly different approach, though.
Yeah.
I don't think we can expect the state to act, but can we do a survey of how many of these issues we have coming off of state lands and try to do the same thing that we did with the police station insulation and ask them to get it on a bill? Like, get us compensation to deal with our problem?
I mean, if you think about it, the whole beaver problem started when the state changed the trapping laws, and, and basically that occurred in Boston, because that's where the population is heavy, and it affected us in the rural areas.
Yeah, so...
So maybe it needs to go back on the ballot for, right? But I don't know that...
Well, well, what I'm saying is that I, I don't know that we can change the state law, and I don't know that we can change the state regulations, and I don't know that we can change the behavior of the state departments, but we can ask them for some money to compensate us for the fact that they've got a problem they're not willing to deal with.
Well, they got this flow device that's there that just hasn't been maintained, that they totally forgot about until I brought it up to them. It just needs to be maintained. If that worked and was functional, they can build...
Like you said, the beavers, the beavers are smack, right?
Yeah.
So they, they will hit that flow device and sometimes it'll work for a few weeks, a few months, but eventually they figure it out and plug them up.
And the problem is that you got that flow meter and the tube that runs from it, probably only runs 20 feet past the beaver dam, so they can hear it. They just block it up. It needs, and they even admit it.
Needs to be extended.
It needs to be extended, but they don't want to touch it now, because it's not...
I think emotionally, Brad called Berthium's office and said what he can do to get us some help.
Yeah, well, get us some money and help, help ourselves. They gave us permission to do what we want on their property. We already have permission, right?
Yep.
But we need to not spend our money.
Right.
So let's go back to Berthium's office and say, hey, we have permission to go take care of this, but it doesn't make any sense for our townspeople to be the ones to pay for that.
And I mean, I don't want to pay legal bills, but I mean, is there anything that could be...
Let's start by just, let's, let's start by just asking the state for the money.
Yeah.
Give, give it, you gave us permission, now give us the money to go deal with your problem.
Yeah.
And we'll do the project management.
I mean, unfortunately, I don't think anyone's gonna prioritize it right now, only because...
We have a water level slot.
No, but we can put it on the hunting do list. We can basically say that we're willing, we're, we're willing, we're willing to contribute project management skills to it.
They're aware. I've, I've given them all these email chains already. They are looking at it.
Yeah, okay, B.
No, um...
Berthium.
Berthium.
Okay, yeah, just tell them.
Berthium, Berthium and Durant's offices are both looking at it.
Yeah, just tell them, you know what, fine. You gave us permission, just give us the funding and we'll project manage it. We'll take care of it. You're too busy. We get it. State's too busy. Give us some money, we'll take care of it.
Start with three to five grand and we'll see what I notice.
Yeah.
All right. Next on the docket, open meeting law complaints, John David Holcroft.
In your packet, you should see, I guess, my, my proposed response for the May 30th, which is the open meeting law complaint regarding the agenda items, not being specific enough. And basically with this, I mean, Mr. Holcroft's complaint is, in my mind, 100% accurate. We did not, uh, we, we in fact used abbreviations and acronyms in, in the agenda, and I think we're all aware of it now after the fact, that, yeah, we did do it, and, uh, at this point, I, I mean, I'm certainly as guilty as anyone. I saw...
It dawned on us as we were going through.
Actually, it came up as a comment, right? I mean, I brought up the fact that we had just gone through saying that that wasn't adequate, and, but it didn't register with me before.
So I think we rectified the issue, right, and now we don't intend to do it again?
Yeah. Yeah.
No more acronyms for the board?
The, the way we're gonna do it procedurally is Karen, as usual, will actually type up the agenda, I will actually approve it, and then the chair, in this case, obviously, Brad, will have a final look at it. So we're gonna have several sets of eyes looking at it to make sure it doesn't slip through the cracks.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, so at this point, then, I would ask the board to authorize myself as town administrator to endorse the response.
I'll make a motion that, uh, Mr. Aponte endorse the letter as written and provide a copy to Mr. Holcroft.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public access. Think this is something that you want it on there?
Yeah, you know, with the amount that we still have left, I'd like to table that, if you're good with that till our next meeting, or how you want to handle it. Just so we can, we're not here till unreasonable hour.
Uh, end-of-year transfers, we have a couple end-of-year transfers.
We'll make a motion that we approve a transfer from tax collector clerk to tax collector expense of fourteen hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I make a motion that we approve the transfers from accountant expense to gas inspector wages, um, to accountant expense to, uh... I have no idea what's...
Cemetery superintendent?
Cemetery superintendent wages, thank you. Uh, SNI wages to...
Snow and ice, yeah.
Snow and ice expense, uh, account expense to town clerk assistant wages, and then account, accounting expenses to election wages.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion that we accept, uh, Officer Angelica Rodriguez's resignation with regrets.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move veterans' war memorial from second floor to first floor.
So while I was going door-to-door campaigning to the selectmen, I had one, uh, asked me about moving the names from the second floor to the first floor, and I thought that'd be a great idea. Uh, he has several relatives that are on that list, and I thought I would be willing to do the work to move the, move it downstairs and put it on the wall over here so that people that are coming into town hall on a regular basis, or the upstairs is used so infrequently, and, and people can access it, but it's very seldom. So I would like to see those lists of names put downstairs where they would be noticed.
I'm cool with that.
Yeah, I don't have any objection to it, so are you making that motion?
Yes, that's my motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Signing off on warrants, uh... Vote to have Ron sign the warrant.
Motion to have Ron sign the warrants.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That didn't take long.
Uh, declare special municipal positions. I think we did have several, but I think we're just gonna sit down...
We're just doing the one, um, town clerk Siri had found a document literally from around two thousand and five in which several positions, I'd say upwards of twenty or so positions, were mentioned as being declared, but we can't find it right now in the minutes. So at this point, we don't know if the document actually made it to action, uh, so we're checking on that. And frankly, there's only one that's of a, kind of an urgent nature, and that's for...
We can do them as we sort it out.
Excuse me?
I said, we can, we can add to this as we sort it out, so...
Absolutely, absolutely. And the, with, with Jacob, he just needs to be declared a special municipal, or not he, but the position of the cable studio project or coordinator to become a special municipal employee because obviously he's working on IT and he wants to work, I guess, other than on a interim basis.
In both spaces, yep.
So as such, by law, we have to declare that position as a special municipal employee.
So I'll make a motion that we appoint Jacob as a special municipal employee for the cable access.
Actually, there, there should be in your packet, there should be a preferred motion.
Okay, here it is. I move to make the following position a special municipal employee position, as allowed by Mass. General Law, Chapter two sixty-eight A, Brookfield Cable Studio Coordinator.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Fiscal year twenty twenty-five appointments. Um, I believe these are all the new appointments for...
Correct, the highlighted ones should be the ones...
Highlighted ones are new.
Karen has gone through meticulously to ensure that the folks that have two- or three-year terms are not included on that list, so everything there should be someone in need of an appointment for July.
Well, there's several one-years.
Correct, yeah, there's several one-years and then there's more.
And then I do have a question. We have a bunch where we've got entire boards that have the same time period that are typically rotational.
I was gonna ask about that, because...
This is not how we usually do it.
Yeah.
It's spread out normally, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, typically what will occur is that, is that, like, for instance, the advisory committee, it's a three-year term, and we're currently, it's five people, two of them would be a three-year term, two of them would be a two-year term, and one of them would be a one-year term, and then we would...
Cycle it, right?
Then, then they would go into all three years after that, or if they had previously been appointed for different time periods, then it would already be staggered. So it feels like that didn't happen with this. Or are we just that far behind?
And then I have a question on the last page. When, when did the overs, when did we put...
So, yeah, two things I noticed. Um, one is there's an assistant animal control officer, that's a new position altogether they had sent? No, I mean, not the assistant, the person.
Yes.
The person is someone new.
Yes.
But my, my question is the personnel board, the five members, for three years.
Karen also put on, to recreate the personnel board, which I thought we were gonna have a discussion about, but...
Well, I would like to discuss it, but, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Kath, what did you say? I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, we can discuss it. I mean, I don't know that we can... We didn't formally vote to dissolve the personnel board, so even though it was defunct, we don't really need to have a discussion to stand it back up again. It would just be a case of approving the appointments or not.
Okay.
So if somebody felt strongly that we didn't want a personnel board, they could vote against all the appointments. But it was never formally dissolved, so it doesn't have to be formally stood up.
I'm, I'm not necessarily against appointing a personnel board, but what I saw before, there were more employees on the personnel board than not employees, and I would rather see it the other way. I...
Now, I believe what Karen told me is there's certain people that are always on it, like the treasurer.
Treasurer is pretty much ex officio.
Right.
Okay. So, and, and not that I have a problem with the tax collector being on it, but I, so, and then, and then the water department, like, how is that...
So we've got, it looks like we've got the treasurer who's ex officio, we've got one elected person, so we never transitioned that to being an appointed position, correct?
I'm not sure how it was set up before.
I don't think we did. She's not appointed, she's elected still, correct?
Brenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, so that's elected.
Okay, so it's one elected, one appointed, and one citizen. That's how it's always been set up.
Okay, okay, well, that makes sense.
And then the treasurer as the ex officio.
And who's the fifth member?
We don't have one right now.
Okay.
So if we get, so we could, we could specify that we'll only fill that with a resident, and then it's basically, I mean, it's three to two fundamentally, but the treasurer has to be on there, so...
Yeah. No, I, I guess now with clarification, I'm good with that.
Okay.
All right, and, and that was my only other question.
Jamie Mc, as I'm looking here, Jamie McNaney, uh, he's gonna be new, he's replacing Bob Hall.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm pretty well good with it.
So do we want to just make the one change to go ahead and, like, pick a couple of folks to just modify the term on the advisory with the understanding that we're not dissing anybody, it's just to make sure that there's a rotation, or do we just put them all on for three years and be done with it?
I'm good with the three years. I mean, there's been a lot of turnover, so someone may drive and we get something right anyway, so I'm, but, but let's put them up for three years and hopefully they stay.
Got it. Okay, and then... So do we, you just want a motion as, as submitted? So we'll make a motion that we approve the appointments as submitted on the printed list, and if anybody wants a copy of the printed list, then you're welcome to it.
I'll second that motion.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, he doesn't have to sign these tonight, because I don't think I do.
No, they don't have to be signed tonight, he could take them home and bring them back. So I just hand them the thing and then just, he could go get back and get them home.
There's a better chance, if I have a little time, they'll be legible.
Legible is not required for signatures. That was the case, there's a bunch of people whose enlistment documentation ain't worth the paper it's printed on.
All right.
All right. Motion to approve the select board minutes for four eighteen twenty-four, six three twenty-four, six six twenty-four, six ten twenty-four, as previously submitted to us via email.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Any items that were not reasonably anticipated?
No.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Perfect.
Second. Well, that happened faster than I would have thought.
Well, not, we didn't get through...
Did you want to, like, actually get a vote?
Oh, yeah, all in favor?
Aye. Now it's a wrap. Sorry.
We tabled that.
We did skip it, we ta, we tabled it, sorry. If you were waiting for that, we, we did skip it.